We are live. Okay, I will call the meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen for April 13th, 2021 to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, there are five selectmen present as well as town council, Richard Bowen. Mr. Sullivan will not be with us this evening.
Uh, let's see, I will ask, uh, Selectman Tropeano to lead us in the pledge, please.
I don't know how I ended up. Okay. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's see announcements. Alan.
Uh, just a couple. Uh, the Oakdale Community Avenue A, uh, they're gonna be doing a cleanup that they do for a couple of years now. Uh, starting Saturday about 10 o'clock in the morning. Uh, we were talking a little bit earlier that Bonset is announced to clean up for the bluffs, et cetera. I believe it's May 15th. I'm not sure what timeframe it's gonna be. It's gonna be in the morning, though. And, uh, that's all I really have as far as announcements.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Patrick.
I have no announcements.
Jim.
Um, no, I'm tired.
Okay, seriously, you, you want a fast meeting? Okay.
Whatever you like to do.
I'll, I'll do my best. Uh, Judy, announcements, please.
Yes, um, the Friends of the Wareham Library, used book sales will be held in the meeting room of the main library at 59 Marion Road. Access to the sale is from the meeting room door only, not through the library. There's a very small ramp. Access to the sale is from the meeting room door. Masks and social distancing will be required and the number of shoppers at any one time may be limited. Bring your own shopping bags, please. Each month, the Friends will have a theme. They have plenty of books in all genres and for all ages. The month of April, our theme will be children's books. Here are the dates and the times. April 22nd, Thursday, from 9:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. April 23rd, Friday, from 9:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. April 24th, Saturday, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Please bring your own bags. The Friends are still unable to accept any more used book donations at this time due to the storage space being limited. Virtual Storytime with the Children's Library is posted each week on Facebook and on the library website. To date, Ms. Marcia has filmed 43 weeks worth of virtual children's storytimes, activity videos, and children's young adult book talks. The library archived most of these videos online, and they can also be found in the archives here on the website. Council on Aging reminder, the applications for fuel assistance deadline has been extended to April 30th. Call 508-291-3100, extension 3133, to determine your eligibility and to schedule an appointment. Chair yoga with Pam begins April 22nd on Thursdays at 2:00 outdoors at the Wareham Free Library, weather permitting. Call 508-291-3130 to register. That's also Council on Aging. Volunteer drivers are still needed for the Meals on Wheels program. There is a mileage reimbursement. Call 508-291-3100, extension 6514, for more information or to join. Beginning April 20th, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the rear of the multi-service center, weather permitting, the Council on Aging will have coffee and conversation sessions. All seniors are invited to attend, and don't forget your masks and your social distancing. Um, I'm not gonna repeat the announcements that I make every week about the free meals. Um, they are posted on our website, and I just wanna say again, thank you to the community of Wareham, which continues to help people with food insecurity. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, first off, the April 26th town meeting, uh, that was originally noticed for the high school auditorium at 7:00 inside. Uh, the moderator, uh, in accordance with her emergency authority, uh, under the COVID laws, has moved it off to June 8th, which is a Saturday at 11:00 a.m.
May 8th.
May 8th.
Did I say June? I don't know why.
May.
Wow, that was a quick correction. Uh, May 8th at 11:00 a.m. Once again, town meeting, May 8th, 11:00 a.m. It's going to be outdoors. It's gonna be on the ball field, just like the one we just had. Uh, it was an interesting setup to be outside. Hopefully, we have good weather on May 8th and, uh, can, uh, get together and listen to, uh, the legislative branch of the town government once again. Uh, the other thing to announce is that Brennan McHernan on the Wareham Helping Wareham Facebook page, uh, he's having his, uh, uh, meals on the 15th to help people in need. Uh, you can go on that site. It's set up, uh, he picks a different restaurant every month, and you can either send money to the restaurant, and they will prepare a meal for four people, or you can prepare your own meal and, uh, make arrangements that you get it to deliver to a family in need. So that's a very nice thing. And once again, that's every 15th of each month. Uh, I believe, uh, Charlie's Place is the restaurant this time around, if I remember correctly from the Facebook posting. So go over there. It's a nice thing. Uh, try to help some of your fellow citizens in need, please. Still a tough time for a lot of people. COVID's put a lot of people out of work still. Uh, so life isn't easy. Let's try to help people who need, who could use a boost here. Uh, that brings me to citizens' comments. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to us tonight, please raise your hand on the hand function. Okay, uh, I see Dee Jepson, which I assume is Dawn Jepson. Let's bring, uh, Mr. Jepson forward, please. Wow, they don't even have to wait for me to ask. Dawn, you're becoming a regular.
I try to stay involved, yes. Uh, can you hear me?
I can, and it was kinda strange because I could hear you when I had the red, no, no microphone up. So you must have some super sophisticated, uh, computer equipment there.
Uh, this is my wife's computer. That's why her name came up, so.
Ah, okay.
Alright.
Wife or Dee was just how you, it was, you know, you phonetically spelled your name, you know, Dawn, initial D, spelled it out, so.
No, but there's, she said a lot of other things, so, but anyway.
Okay.
What I wanted to say is I was very pleased to see every, that so many people turned out for the vote, whether they were pro or against, i- is immaterial. It's the fact that people were very, very, uh, and, and wanted to be involved and cared about Wareham and the town in which they live. Um, what I do wanna mention is that, uh, there is one big opportunity coming up, and that is when it gets passed, is the infrastructure bill. Any projects that you even considered, that you thought needed to be done, the homework should be done if you need to get consultants or whatever, because this is an opportunity of a lifetime. And this will not come around a second time. And so if, whether it be the dam that's over by Tremont Hill, uh, by Tremont Nail, or it's, uh, moving the railroad tracks, or whatever it is, uh, the onset pier, anything that you think should be done, should, uh, do, do the homework upfront. Um, I'm, I'm just reading from the paper and what it said, "Members of Congress have begun a frenzy of lobbying." And so those who get there first are gonna get it done. So I, I hope that anything that you have in the, in, in the works that you'd like to do, go for it, and thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And in response to that, I think this is almost like, uh, a return, you know, to the New Deal type of heavy infrastructure that we saw, and even in this town, if you look around, both the post office and town hall were put up, uh, by the Works Progress Administration, which was one of the, uh, the New Deal, uh, agencies that dispersed money and so on and so forth. We had a similar, uh, situation, uh, with the American Recovery and Relief Act back in, I think, 2008, 2009. I don't know how much we had shovel ready at that time, uh, but that's, that's gonna be the, the key word once again. And, you know, unlike some of the other things in Washington these days that go by strict party line vote, I think that this time the president may be able to woo some Republicans, because let's face it, they like bringing home projects and improvements and everything else to their districts as much as any politician does. Uh, so it's, it'll be interesting to see what takes place in a final shape, but I do agree we need to be ready, so thank you for that. Uh, I don't see anybody else, so let's go to board comments. Uh, Alan.
Uh, I thought we probably mentioned earlier about the, uh, Wareham Fire and Water District has their election this Saturday, I believe it starts, I think at 10 o'clock in the morning, and I think it goes to 4, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I believe it's 10 to 4.
But you can also, you can also vote right now, any day.
Yes, but just let people know it's, it's usually, the attendance is usually pretty low. Obviously, they're, they're meeting, uh, this past, uh, uh, excuse me, Monday, there was 61 people total uh, for the district meeting. The, the meeting took exactly 40 minutes. Uh, it was interesting that they would have an article for a quorum of going from 50 to 25. I made a motion to go ahead and make it a zero quorum, because I don't think they realized they could do something like that. Uh, it was accepted and passed unanimously. And, um, I think that's all I really have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Patrick. Uh, use your microphone, Patrick.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Jim.
Um, I've been reading a lot of, um, host community agreements today and, um, lease, lease agreements and whatnot. So, um, hopefully we can, can bring, um, one of the, uh, proponents for an HCA up, uh, within the next week or two. Um, that's about all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Judy.
Yes, I just wanna, um, make you board members, fellow board members, aware of a call that I was on with Massachusetts Audubon, Wareham Land Trust, myself and a member of the planning board. Uh, myself and the member of the planning board were invited by Massachusetts Audubon. Um, Little Harbor Golf Course is for sale for a price of $2.3 million. And Massachusetts Audubon has agreed to sign a purchase and sale, and they have until, I think it's January 1st of 2022, to come up with the money. Um, they told us on this Zoom meeting that they don't want to maintain the golf course, but they want to restore the coastal forest and do some salt marsh restoration and conservation. Part of their fundraising efforts will include an MVP, or Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant, in partnership with the town. I explained to them, everyone on the meeting, um, that if we took state or federal money, that that would mean the, that money and whatever it was used to do would provide access to everybody. And I thought, because what they were talking about was having access to the Little Harbor Beach, either by a boardwalk or using the parking lot of the current, um, golf course clubhouse as a parking lot, and then having people be able to walk through the, the cart paths. And I repeated that I thought that a, um, an opportunity to, um, provide public access to anyone in Massachusetts to what is very well known as a residence-only beach was a non-starter. I just wanted you gentlemen to be aware of what I have been told is the plan.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and I know previously, uh, you know, I actually had those documents kicking around that go towards how Little Harbor became a residence-only beach. It was purchased in 1947, uh, for like 5,000 bucks. It's kind of, kind of amazing when you think about it today. Uh, but anyway, uh, in 1947, the Selectmen's Report said, you know, it was purchased for resident, you know, use. Uh, in 1996, because the original purchasing article didn't exactly specify that, town meeting went back and passed an article. Uh, and the article says, "Petition the Town of Wareham to adopt the following bylaw," which actually, it, it's, you know, not actually a bylaw, "but to reaffirm the intent of Legislative Act Number 23 of February 4th, 1947." And what they're talking about there is the state legislature, because first they went to the state legislature, because I guess you had to do that first to take a property interest or something back in the 40s. I don't know exactly what the procedure was. Um, and town meeting, Article Number 29 of the 1947 town meeting, and that's what I was just describing earlier, "and reestablish Little Harbor Beach as a town bathing beach for residents and their guests only, or to take any other action relative thereto." So that's the status of the beach right now. Uh, on a personal level, uh, I, I've questioned sometimes the nature of the permits that the town gives people to use it. Uh, you know, residents and guests, sometimes I think has a little bit different meaning than what I see for eligibility for the sticker, but I haven't made too big a quibble about it. But, you know, one of the reasons they redid it back in 1996, and my late mother was already involved in the effort, was, uh, the feeling of the people back then was, all these Cape Downs have resident beaches. And at the time, of course, it was being touted, uh, in the 90s, it was being touted as this great windsurfing place. And the windsurfers were coming down all over the East Coast, because it was literally one of the, probably three or four best spots on the entire East Coast to go windsurfing, because you always got a breeze in Buzzard's Bay. It's fairly shallow out there, you know, it's long, i- it's just a great place to windsurf. So the windsurfers were taking it over. The town administrator liked the windsurfers, uh, the res, some of the residents didn't, so this was a way to try to get it back for the residents. And, you know, one of the things that, uh, we try to do here is provide services for residents, and we find that a struggle. I would hate to accept any kind of money, and I would, I would fight it vehemently. That would take this property out of residence, uh, reservation, if you will. Uh, I think that, that would be grotesquely unfair to the residents, and just in terms of the law of unintended consequences, I can tell you, I live above a boat ramp, and that boat ramp is Tempest Knob. And up until 1998, when the town took $300,000 in state money to renovate, uh, the parking lot down there and to improve the pier, that was a launching ramp for residents only. So if you were a guy in Wareham with a boat, you could go down there at 8 o'clock on a Saturday morning, and guess what? After 1998, that was no longer the case. That's when we started getting the boatyards using it. Uh, that's from out of town. That's when we started getting people from out of town, because once you take the state money, that's it. Everybody has access. So let's not make that mistake again. And, you know, it, it, I think it would behoove the parties involved in this to explain further their plans, because I, I gotta be honest with you. I would, I would ask the town to put up a fence if they built a boardwalk down to Little Harbor Beach.
I think what I would repeat, so that you understand, they are planning to have their town in partnership with the Town of Wareham, apply for an MVP grant, so we could.
Look, I don't, I don't, uh, if they want to apply for an MVP grant, that's great, but if the, the grant application has to specifically exempt out that Little Harbor Beach property.
But it also cannot be with, with the town, because the minute the town signs off on it, I believe it becomes open to everyone.
Yeah, and I just don't see that happening.
Is there, um, can I?
You would get sued. I'm, I'm sorry, Jim?
Can I speak here, or?
Yeah.
Um, is there an issue with the active recreation that's provided, um, by the course now? Um, to, to turn it, return it back to, uh, pristine forest and sea meadow? Sure, I mean, we don't have a lot of active recreation in the sense for, uh, in the town. Um, I'm, I'm not against doing something with Audubon on that. Um, but I, I would like to see some sort of active recreation, get people out and about, and, um, a lot of people enjoy that. So that's just my thoughts.
I, I can answer for you. I know that originally the owners wanted to keep it as a golf course, and they had made, they'd had several conversations with different parties about selling it to Mr. X or Mrs. Y or whatever. And none of those plans, um, were able to come forward. So Audubon would be making it walking trails, the, what I understood was that the cart paths would be turned into walking trails and the rest of it would be grass and, you know, whatever. So the, the ability to play golf would be taken away.
Yeah, that's part of the opportunity zone, isn't it?
I think it is, yes. But it's also, it's also in a, um, whatever the worst flood map.
Is it a velocity zone or an AE zone or something?
Yeah.
Okay, but thank you.
You will.
Thanks. Well, okay, I mean, I, I guess, you know, we'll, if, if anything comes across our, our desk with that, I guess we'll deal with it at the time, but I, I just, you know, I, I think the two parties involved in, in trying to put this together need to understand, uh, you know, the, the status of the town beach, and that we'd be crucified if we ever gave it away, and we should be. So, uh, let's see, moving on.
Well, would it be, could you, may I ask you to, I don't know, poll the board or something? I mean, because they have, in fact, asked the town to partner with them.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, with respect, this is an item that isn't on the agenda, so it probably wouldn't be a good idea to get into votes on direction.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, let's put, I'm happy to put it on an agenda for next week. Uh, you know, if the sale were imminent tomorrow, I might ask for a 48-hour vote, but having no knowledge of, of such imminence, uh, why don't we put it on the agenda for next week? And if, if you would like me to send a letter explaining, uh, the status of the land to those two parties, I'm happy to do it.
I, I think that would be great.
Okay, good.
Alan's up.
Okay.
Alan has something to say on this, Peter.
Oh, okay, I see, stand up, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, for information purposes, since, have we officially been notified of this as a board?
Not as a board. I am bringing it to you as an, I was asked as a member of Massachusetts Audubon as a courtesy to attend a webinar with three members of Audubon, one member of Wareham Land Trust. I suggested another person be in on the webinar, um, happens to be a member of the planning board. It was also a, uh, a neighbor of the, of the golf course, just as interested parties, parties.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about that part of it all. I just think that until we're officially notified, you know, to put on record, you know, something submitted to us, I don't see any reason to bring this up or discuss it till it, it's really on our plate, because we really don't know any of the details or anything at this point. So I would hold off until we really get notified as a group.
Fair enough.
Would, um, would you like me to send a copy of the notes that I, that were taken at the meeting?
Sure, it's not a problem. I'm not, say, Julie, I'm not concerned about the meeting or anything else. It's just I think that the board should be notified as a board, that they have some plans and stuff, so we know exactly what's coming, when they come before us. Because right now, we, we have, we have.
Yeah, the concern I have is that the notes that, that we have is that, um, part of the fundraising efforts include a, an MVP grant in partnership with the town. That's, that's the, that's where I get the hair, the back of my neck.
No, I understand, but again, they haven't officially asked us or approached us to actually do that as a board yet.
They may not have as a board, but they may have asked other members of our body politic.
I understand. I'm just, well, follow procedure. Really, they, they have to come before the person formally approve it and put it on the agenda at that point, when they formally request it. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, in, in terms of MVP grants, uh, those are, as I recall, um, when it, when it comes to things like that and the Mass Works Grants, we've always been, uh, the applicant, or we've handed it off to planning and community development to apply on our behalf, because, you know, we, we stand in the name of the town of Wareham, so that needs to come through us. So, to Alan's point, I suppose if they, if we don't have a request for, for, uh, you know, an agreement for an MVP grant, then we don't have anything to act upon. So it is what it is. Well, well, I guess we'll wait and see what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, my comments. Uh, we had one hell of a town meeting on Saturday.
Sure.
Total ass-kicking. Congratulations to the no people. They turned out in force. Uh, you know, the age-old lesson here, and this has happened a couple of other times, when we've tried to go to town meeting with something and it wasn't laid out A through Z, it wasn't totally specified, and, you know, you go up there and you say, "Well, you know, we think we might wanna do something, something with something over or somewhere." Uh, the voters don't like that. They want specificity. And, you know, I don't know why personally. I haven't learned that through a couple of prior attempts when it didn't go so well. But I'll tell you what, I felt the whip and stick that day. Uh, and, you know, that's something we need to consider going forward with proposals. People, especially, uh, abutters, want to know what it is. They, they're probably gonna try to know who it is, although in the context of redoing zoning, that can be a little difficult. Um, but you just can't go in and ask for a blank check, not in this, uh, climate of suspicion about all government. Uh, it's not just us. It's the federal government, it's the state government. Uh, people are looking. Uh, people want to know what the government intends to do. They don't want to give blank checks. So, you know, I don't know about anybody else, but I'm gonna heed that lesson. And, uh, any further proposals, uh, like this are gonna have to be a lot more exacting and a lot more specific before I'll vote to put them on a law. So that's all that needs to be said about that. Uh, COVID-19 update. Uh, we're in the red, folks. Uh, we don't have any administrators here tonight, but we're in the red. You know, please be careful. Please pay attention. You know, the fact that you're still walking on planet Earth over a year after this thing started shows you did some smart things at some point, but don't stop doing smart things now. Continue to wash your hands, continue to wear the mask, continue to be careful about, you know, your, who you associate with, and all of those things. So, um, trash disposal update. I'll turn this over to Mr. Manise, because he usually has, uh, something.
Excuse me, you missed appointments.
Okay. See, this is what happens when I try to do stuff on my phone. It doesn't work so well. Uh, so we have an appointment, Council on Aging, Melissa Corinian. Could we please, uh, bring? Wow, they are quick tonight.
Yeah, they are quick tonight.
With drama, gra. So we'll wait for Melissa to get her microphone on and video, hopefully.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you're interested in, uh, becoming a member of the Council on Aging?
Yes, it's something that I've been toying now for almost a decade, and I'm finally in a position in my current job where I can take the time off, and I really, I'd like to help out if I could.
Excellent. Uh, well, I'll go around the horn. Alan, any questions for this applicant?
No, just thank you for applying.
Patrick.
Uh, thank you.
Jim.
Again, thanks. Appreciate it.
Judy.
Thank you, and I think you, your, um, credentials very well suit you to be on the Council on Aging. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for applying and stepping up and, uh, trying to assist the government in, in doing things, uh, for, for the seniors. So with nothing more to be said, I'll ask for a motion.
I move that Board of Selectmen appoint Melissa Corinian to the Council on Aging. Melissa Corinian's address is 23 Highland Road. Her term would expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion to appoint by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call vote. Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Uh, thank you, uh, Melissa. Uh, we have to sign, uh, your appointment, and I would suggest, uh, let's see, stopping in town hall Thursday, Judy?
No.
To get sworn in, or how do we wanna work this?
No, uh, next Monday, please. We have had, um, we've had, we've been short-staffed in the Board of Selectmen's office for a whole week and a half.
Are we open Monday?
So, so Melissa, you'll, you'll need to, uh, stop by the Selectmen's Office Monday morning and pick up your, your appointment, uh, paper, and take it down to the town clerks, uh, on the first floor and get sworn in.
Are we open Monday?
No, not Monday. It's gonna be Tuesday. Monday's a holiday.
Thank you.
Good pickup, Jim. So Melissa, now that we've driven you all the way off to Tuesday, uh, what do you think?
Tuesday it is. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you once again for stepping up and applying.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'll go back to the trash disposal.
Um, well, all I can really say is I got some, some vehicle counts. Um, for Saturdays only, I think that's the only day that we, we have someone there actually doing the vehicle counts at the transfer station, and, um, the numbers are dropping. So, um, that might be indicating that because of the curbside pickup, that there'll be less use. We'll just have to wait and see. Um, I haven't received any emails related to curbside. I don't know if, um, if, um, our town administrator's office has, I, uh, so hopefully people are getting used to it. If anybody else has anything to say, please do.
I can just add, Mr. Manise, if you don't mind.
No.
I know, I know that it's been very difficult to get through to the municipal maintenance department, and that people have been, um, concerned that their phone calls are not being returned in a timely fashion. Um, and I have heard that, you know, some individuals have been quite rude to our employees. They're doing the best they can. If you have 100 phone calls in a day and you've answered 40 of them, and your day ends, yeah, you're still short in returning calls. So that, I just would ask people to remember that they're talking to, to the messengers, not the people who put this into, um, into effect. And we're doing the best we can, and it is not glitch-free, we got it, but, uh, you know, hang in there, it'll get, it'll get done. Thanks, Jim.
Oh, that's perfect, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, let's see, next up, discussion and vote to select the Bentley Companies as Tremont Nail Factory master developer. Uh, Judy has brought up the issue, and I will throw it through to council, uh, that the Bentley Companies is not the exact party, uh, that would be the master developer. Judy, if you'd care to explain the facts to Attorney Bowen?
Well, when I was reviewing the paperwork, Mr. Bowen, thank you, um, I looked at, you know, all of the, the parties, and on one of the papers, it says it's Bentley Builders LLC, and that's not what we have on the agenda. And they actually have a slightly different address. It's, they're in Rhode Island, but it's...
Put it off, and we can have them do it right.
Thank you.
Okay, then we, I will not ask for a motion on that, and I will, uh, renotice it for next week.
So, can I, can I ask a question just related to that?
Yeah, sure, it's on the agenda, go ahead.
Um, it's, it's, it's a nice document. So what, what are the actual terms and condition when we do this?
Well, I can tell you-
I'm trying to appoint them, but there's no terms and conditions related to our, um, obligation or their obligation, uh, to each other beyond, you know, the building and the land, but what, how's, you know, financials work out in something like this?
Well, I can tell you that a similar process was, you know, the RFP process and so forth was used when we were looking for a developer for, uh, Littleton Drive. And what happened was, you know, we put out the RFP, in that instance, we had three different RFPs, so a choice had to be made, and there was some scoring done and so on and so forth, you know, who came closest to the goals of the RFP, so on and so forth. Uh, while we don't have that competition here, uh, what I'm envisioning the process of being as selecting them as the master developer, that doesn't mean that you have to enter into a development agreement with them, because then it, then it behooves them to come forward with, uh, the actual proposal. Uh, and in this instance, where it's the Tremont Nail Factory, which is, uh, subject to the overlay district that was passed back in 2018, I think, um, we are the permitting authority here. So they've gotta come back to us for anything. Uh, now, obviously, there are certain things that we would, uh, delegate off, uh, to somebody who knows a lot more about construction than we do, all those sorts of things. You know, we are gonna need some help, just as the planning board gets help through the 53G accounts. So I would envision it as a similar process, Jim, but all we're doing now is saying, "Okay, Tag, you're in, come up with something."
Well, that's, I guess that's a, um, risk on their part, more so than our part, then.
You betcha.
Yeah, it just concerned me a little bit, when you go into a, an agreement when you, um, we're choosing them as a master developer, but there's no terms or conditions related to finances. So I'm like, how the hell is it, how the heck does this work? People just gonna come up and say, "Well, this is a great idea, and what do you think?" And, um, then come back and, um, do we lease it to them? Uh, do, you know?
Right, is, yeah, exactly. Is, we can't, we're not gonna sell it because it was acquired with community preservation money, and I sure as hell don't want to pay that money back. So you're talking a lease, I mean, with Littleton Drive, it turned out to be a 99-year lease. If you're talking about people making, you know, substantial renovations and making those buildings fit for, you know, 21st century use, then, uh, you know, they're gonna have to come up with something pretty substantial in terms of, uh, what they're talking about for investment.
And I think Historical Society might be interested in one of the buildings. I, I know there's some discussion between the two parties on that. So that'd be interesting to kind of know where that's heading. I would like to kind of have an idea.
Yeah, I know that the President of the Historical Society has, uh, you know, floated the idea of possibly using the, what we call the office building, which is the white building up by the road, uh, as a future museum. Uh, and, you know, I mean, I don't know if that's the building or something, but I do think that something that honors the heritage of the place is pretty important. So I would agree with that. Um, but yeah, it's, it's really an open-ended process, Jim, at this point.
I just wanted to get it out there before, you know, and we're gonna come back next week and everybody think about it a little bit, I guess.
Yep.
I'm still learning. That's a good thing.
Excuse me.
Exactly. Okay, so we'll come back to that. Uh, discussion and vote to execute lease of steel building at Tremont Nail Factory, Aiden Street to Aspen Blue LLC for the purpose of marijuana products manufacturing. Uh, this is the second go-round at trying to get a marijuana products manufacturer in there. We had, uh, Organne Brands all hooked up, and then the governor banned vape products, and then all kinds of craziness hit, and pandemics, and all this, that, and the other thing, and they walked away and decided they would go to Michigan instead. Um, so that left us, you know, sort of holding the bag on that one. So these people have come along and want to do substantially the same thing.
We, um, had asked for some information, maybe two weeks ago, Mr. Slaven had asked for information, and we were only given that information today at 3 o'clock.
Yeah, you know what, why don't we, why don't we hold off on this and the next one until next week? Uh, Alan?
Uh, I was basically gonna discuss this, and, um, I went over the host agreement, and I'm a little concerned, you know, when we have a host agreement, normally you have like a minimum dollar amount, uh, that makes sure that the company that's, they have a host agreement, actually tries to work and make some money for us. But we have a maximum of $450,000 as a cutoff for this particular program over the five years or whatever. I don't understand why we have a maximum. Uh, basically, if they're able to sell, uh, more product that would generate under 3%, more than quarter, $50,000, why are we cutting ourselves short? I don't think there should be any, any cutoff as far as maximum, because in the business world, when you have salespeople, which I had quite a few of, we never played around with their commissions, because if you did, you'd lose them, and the bottom line is the more they sell, the more you, the more the company makes. So, to me, this is like, uh, we're, we're taking a piece, and at a certain point, we stopped the incentive, but we stopped getting money. And with, I'm not saying they'll, they'll generate more than 450,000, but what happens if they're super successful? Why are we throwing money away that we should be getting? Everybody said, ask for, you know, sidewalks, lights, all these other things, and here we go, and we're restricting how much money we can get. So I have a problem with that.
Okay, uh, I would, in that instance, uh, in this, during the week, I would ask you to go talk to the, uh, uh, town administrator and director of planning, because they're the ones who typically, you know, negotiate the terms of these and bring them forward to us. I will say that with Organne Brands, there was something similar, and it was the 3% up to 300,000. So, that's how the, the structure was for that one. This one is actually more generous than that one would be. But if, if you have those questions, uh, since we're gonna, we'll put these off, because you had questions about the principles, um, why don't you, uh, you know, go and try to find out the information there and just to see what the logic was?
Okay, we'll do it. This makes sense to me, that's all.
Yep. I understand that.
I got my hand up here.
Yeah, Jim.
Um, well, that, that 3% is the impact fee, correct?
No, we're not allowed, I don't think we're allowed to charge the impact fee for manufacturing. We are for retail, but not for manufacturing. So this would, this would be the 3%.
Sales tax.
Yeah, this would be the 3% sales tax.
And we're, all right, well, um, right, right, but it's not retail, so it's in lieu of, correct?
Well, we're, we're allowed to, I believe we're allowed to tax 3% if you're growing, if you're, you know, grinding this stuff up and you're squeezing the oil out of it, or if you're selling it retail. That's, I believe that's, as a host community for those processes.
Um, would you mind just going, asking, um, our town attorney?
Yeah, his microphone's off, so I think he wanted to speak.
Oh, my microphone's on.
I mean, yeah.
But I'm happy to turn it off.
No, 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 I meant on, I, I got confused there. Um, yeah, so 3% is what they gotta pay, right?
Yes, exactly. So.
As they want.
Just as a fee that the state allows us to charge.
Is that like forever, or just for five years, or?
That's for a limited duration.
A limited duration, right? Five years.
Yeah, the most we can execute a host community agreement for is five years, so that's, that would be the limit of that term.
Yeah, okay, and, um, there was a couple of questions, I did go through it. So I just had to click over to my, um, PDF file. Um, yeah, it says the annual payment should be inclusive of an act in lieu of the local sales tax required to be paid, blah, blah, blah. Um, under community support and obligations, um, I believe in their, um, RFP response, they, they did indicate a, um, a community support, and we discussed it when they were here, and they did notice, they did note that it was, um, missing and was, we're going to address that. Excuse me, that's under section, section four, I think. And I didn't see that addressed. Um, and then, saying, well, you know, might as well take care of it now before we get back here next week, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, so it's good we're discussing it. I'm scrolling through it, so, um, the condition of the lease premises, uh, do we need to put any, uh, funds or, or work into the premises before the, um, they'll be, they will accept the, you know, taking them for leasing?
Uh, well, based upon what happened with Organne Brands, that was solely up to them to make the improvements to the building in order to be able to conduct their operation. Uh, that would have, uh, you know, so to the extent that, you know, you needed better electrical, and I think that's been actually been taken care of, I think, uh, stronger electrical was run to it by Organne before they abandoned it. Um, I don't, you know, we don't have any obligations, because I think it's just triple net.
Well, yeah, I, I just, you know, I saw it in there, um, what I just read to you on that. So that's why I asked it, you know, um...
No, these are all good questions, and I, you know, please take them, take them to, uh, you know, the, the two fellows that negotiate the contract.
Yeah, that's under Article 5, condition of lease premises. Um, that's why I was tired of reading all these, all these things today. Um, but thank you.
There you go. No, you can go cross-eyed, Lee, reading these things, because the funny thing is, is 98% of its boilerplate, that's the same on every lease document ever written, and then the 2% that matters is buried in the 98% boilerplate, so then you gotta tease it out to figure out what's really going on.
Exactly, and, um, and thank you.
That's why we pay people like Attorney Bowen to, uh, look at these things.
Yeah, he's a pro.
He's a pro. Okay, so we'll hold off on those. Uh, I don't think we have anything for either the 2021 Annual Spring Town Meeting or the 2021 Spring Special with an annual to vote upon at this point.
Actually, you have, um, the capital plan for the WPCF, which was sent to us today, if you want to.
Well, I mean...
We'll hold off.
Yeah, I mean, let's see if we can get the town administrator back to-
Yeah, okay.
... these things, because he's the person logically answer any questions, I think.
No problem.
Um, let's see. I guess that brings us down to any other town business. Do we have any 48-hour business, Alan?
I just have one thing I wanted to add, I forgot, I'm sorry. Um, all of the restaurant outdoor, um, food serving and that we approved last week, subject to inspections, all of those inspections have been made and cleared, so those licenses has, have all been released.
Great, oh, good.
Thank you, sorry, I forgot to do that earlier.
No, no, that's fine. Um, so Alan had no 48-hour business, Patrick?
Oh.
Jim?
Yeah.
Judy?
Nope.
Myself, none. Town administrators report, that won't be happening. Liaison initiative reports, Alan?
I'll try and be quick, too. This is the second Tuesday of the month, so basically it'd be, I would've been in Boston all day today. Uh, as far as the, uh, AIR CA, which is the, uh, the 1.9 trillion-dollar program, we're still waiting for final details, the money should have already started flowing, it hasn't yet. The second one, which I think Mr. Jepson was mentioning, actually, is the, what they call the American Jobs Program now, which is 2.3 trillion, which has not been signed, not been agreed to, they're going back and forth on that. Uh, it's supposed to be an infrastructure bill, but actually, uh, it's gonna have like transportation, electrical, water, uh, how we live and how we make and create. So it's very restricted as far as real infrastructure, when you come down to it. There was a, there was a program for $13 billion, which maybe Mr. Jepson is possibly thinking about, which was basically run through your state, uh, excuse me, your federal congressman in general. Each one got, uh, was allowed to submit up to 10 projects for the region. Uh, we submitted through Mr. Buckland, I believe, three. Unfortunately, I don't have the three here in front of me that I can give you the description of, but they were submitted in to, uh, you know, Congressman Keating's office, and, uh, we were able to get it in on time. I mentioned it before, we only had about a four-day window in order to get it done, because the time we were notified by that Saturday, they had to be in, I think it was a Wednesday. So we haven't heard anything yet, but, uh, we may or may not get anything, it's extremely competitive. You got all, you know, 50 states plus, and, you know, in Massachusetts alone, there's 351 communities, each one has so many representatives to it. So, uh, there's a little confusion in what people think is happening, it isn't as far as the infrastructure bills. We already know about the Housing Choice Bill and the mess that was made as far as the zoning, for the simple majority. I think that the most likely, and it's not official yet, they may go back to square one and rewrite the whole part of the zoning article they have in that particular bill, because there seems to be no clear answers to anything right now. One thing that kind of disturbed me today, discussing is, there's, there's something that was passed by the governor a little while ago, which had to be with a police board commission, which, you know, basically looks after, uh, the status of all the police officers, any issues, et cetera, all goes to this board. Um, they mentioned today that we have to, our police department by August 31st, by September 1st, has to submit reports on forms that they are supplying about all current police officers. Uh, that's gonna be a lot of work for a particular police department to do. And then in December, we have to do the same thing for all former police officers, which is a huge task. And of course, it's, there's no funding, it's always great funding mandates, and, uh, this thing here, you know, I was not very happy about this particular police board they set up, the commission and stuff, because it takes away from the town and puts our police department, you know, basically, under the gunner, the whole separate little commission, and I'm not happy at all, but that's just my own feeling. Uh, the other thing that was really interesting is, uh, the vocational school admission practices are now under scrutiny, because they feel as though they're not as diverse as the local schools. So they're gonna be going after the vocational schools to change their, uh, admission practices. It just keeps getting, getting better and better. And that's all I have for today, guys.
Could I ask Mr. Slaven a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
What do you suppose the purpose of this police review board thing is?
It's, it's a, off the record, for me, basically, it's a way to show that the state is concerned about police officers and their actions, et cetera. So anything that happens with a police officer now, this commission is actually, the board, it all goes to them.
But even prior police officers, how far do they want us to go back?
They want records going back for former as well, but they want current by September.
When you say records, are they talking about, uh, you know, allegations made against officers?
Just records in general, Peter, because I haven't seen the forms, because this particular commission has to supply the forms to the police department. Just records in general, Peter, because I haven't seen the forms because this particular commission has to supply the forms to the police department. So I don't know how, how intrusive they're gonna be. It's another one. Go ahead.
Has anybody contacted the, the state auditor to say that this is an unfunded mandate? Cause it's starting to sound like one.
You know how, you know how that works. They come up with some good excuse. I think I've, oh, ten times. We lose every time we try it.
Well, if you want, I'll put it on the agenda next week and we can talk about, uh, you know, making that claim to the state. I mean, how the hell do they expect a, a department that's got what, like a couple of administrative assistants? You know, we got like forty uniformed officers. How the hell do they expect us to do this stuff?
You can't. What I suggest is put it off for two weeks. Let's get all the information in front of everybody so they can read it and see what is this. This bill was passed probably a month or so ago. I think I mentioned it in one of my usual reports of that. I think there's some details. If you go back, you'll see it. I think it was a month ago. Let's pull a bill out and get everybody a copy so they can read it. It's, it's quite inclusive and it's a lot of stuff involved.
Then the forms haven't come out yet. Is that correct, Mr. Slaven?
The, this particular board has not even generated form check.
Okay, thanks.
They've generated deadlines, but no forms.
Welcome to America.
Welcome to Massachusetts.
Well, welcome to anywhere, I guess, if you, nobody's, uh, pulling your feet to the fire. Okay, we'll, we'll revisit in a couple of weeks. I'll slap a right on an agenda because I, you know, this sounds foolish. Uh, anything else, Alan?
Uh, no, just, uh, some of us were able to, uh, make, uh, Chief Walchek's retirement party today. Uh, it was really nice. The, uh, our local was, you know, a district attorney for Plymouth County was there. Uh, the assistant district attorney was there. There were a lot of, uh, I'd say a lot, there was at least four or five police chiefs of surrounding towns came. Uh, John has a huge following because of what he does in school or, you know, the schools and everything else. And it's really a nice time. I can only say for myself, you know, for the board that, uh, he'll be sorely missed. Uh, I think he did a fantastic job pulling the community together, especially in the times where the police department is under siege everywhere. Uh, Wareham really has to be proud of what he was able to accomplish here. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Patrick?
All right, so, um, I want, uh, the, uh, the new, um, viewing of the school is up. If anybody wants to go look at it. Uh, it's absolutely awesome how far they've gotten. Mostly everything sheet rock now and stuff, and they got cabinets starting to go in. It's starting to look like a real school, so it's kind of fun to go and watch. They got the ceiling painted in the gym and, you know, all that kind of stuff. It's kind of a green, like a light green kind of, uh, thing, which is kind of cool. It actually looks, it looks like it'll be kind of fun and nice. There's a lot of nice stuff going on, so take a look at it if you get a chance. Uh, you get to see what, uh, what, what your money's doing, you know? I mean, uh, it's going along very well. And I'm sure it's gonna be finished, uh, considerably earlier than it, than it was anticipated, which is always nice. Because of course, we all know that saves money. Um, the next thing is, is that, um, in looking and reviewing the governor's latest, um, forty B regulations that he signed in, was it last week that he signed in, I think? One of the things that was sort of shocking to me was that if in fact, um, you go to your housing department, your housing department, you know, the housing board, and you ask them how many people they have on a waiting list. And if they have fifty or more, you gotta build it. Doesn't matter whether you're over the ten percent or not. And just so you know, Wareham, we have eight hundred and fifty on that list.
We sure do.
So, uh, it ain't gonna matter. The ten percent don't matter. Doesn't matter anymore. The ten percent doesn't mean anything, uh, if your list is over fifty. So that's pretty sad, uh, in my opinion. Plus, now he's incentivized uh, this as well in order to, uh, you know, get a lot of it going. It, it's a big centerpiece for those guys. It was a centerpiece when they came in. And they're making good on it. And, uh, sad for the communities, as you well know, um, the cost and the burden on the towns are considerable. And, um, uh, I, I don't know if we, you know, the ones that are gonna be coming on board are gonna be bad enough. And if we happen to get a big project, it's gonna be, uh, pretty sad. But, you know, there's nothing we can do. Apparently, uh, it's, it's out of our hands. Um, you know, it's really bad when, when the housing board is the one who gets to say, well, yeah, we got eight hundred fifty people waiting. Okay, well then, keep going.
Well, I mean, that's, that's just the list the housing authority has and they've,
Yeah.
had the list for a long time and it's always been over seven hundreds as long as I can remember because,
Yeah, it has been.
Uh, that was something that came out during the whole, uh, Woodland Cove, uh, ZBA comprehensive permit. The hearing there. Uh, the housing authority showed up and they said, yeah, we got seven hundred people on the waiting list. And of course, the developer took that and said, well, see, now you need housing. So, you know, and that's, I, I'm just interested though, is this a change in the forty B law or is this a, just a change in the regulate, the implementing regulations?
Implementing regulations. Good. You gotta go look at the, you go look at what he, uh, he did, um, he did take, uh, I think five parts of it and veto it. So, cause he could line item it and he took five and he took, lined them out. And actually, it was a good thing he took those five out because it could have been really bad. If you go look at it, it's really amazing. It's like section forty-four and fifty-three, whatever. I don't remember all the numbers, but, uh, it's, it's pretty scary. Um, you know, I, I, um, you know, as you know, for us, we're, we're a primed community because we have that overlapping Boston numbers. Uh, it makes us vulnerable as it is. And then when you add stuff like this, it makes us even more vulnerable. And it's just, um, you know, and it, it's not that, you know, I don't wanna see people have housing. Trust me, that's not the point. And it isn't that I don't wanna see low income people have housing. That's not the point. It's just that how much can you handle and how fast can you handle it?
Yep. All good points.
Do you, by chance, excuse me, do you by chance know the, um, name of the bill? Was it the housing choices bill or was it the, um, Act of twenty twenty that was signed this year?
You know, I don't have it on me. I'll, I'll send it to you, Jim, when I, I'll go look at, pull it out of my thing.
Yeah.
Right now I'm on, so I don't wanna go in there, but I'll pull it out and I'll send it to you.
I, I would like that.
Yeah, they, somebody actually sent me a link to it. I didn't realize it was even done. They sent me a link and I, uh, went and read it and I was like, oh boy, this is fun.
Cause I know, um, our, our attorney, um, has been doing some work on the act that was signed into legislation in July, which is housing choices. Um, and it, it has some effect on the vote, now the vote counts and.
Yeah, the vote counts now, uh, majority and not a super majority.
Yeah, and so, um, I see Mr. Bowen here. I don't know if he'd like to talk to that or not, um, if, if it would be all right with, uh.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Always all right for Mr. Bowen to talk.
Yep.
Um, I'm working with, uh, a couple of state agencies and trying to clarify the language of the law and some of the advisories that have issued. Uh, some of the advisors that came out had, uh, confusing, some might say, uh, erroneous information on them. And I've written some summaries for them that I think point out the deficiencies. Uh, some of them were revised on Friday, uh, before our meeting, uh, to clarify, uh, some of the problems that I think our boards were experiencing. And, uh, I, as I think one of the previous speakers said, there's a chance that the law will be rewritten and I hope to play a part in rewriting the law. It's sort of like the classic thing between sales and manufacturing. Sometimes the sales department sells something that the manufacturing department can't quite put together. Uh, so we're gonna try to rein in the sales department under the golden dome and help with the manufacturer, if that makes any sense.
You know, Rich, my, my point of the whole thing is it needs to be fairer uh, than it is the way it's sold out because, like I say, communities like ours are just prime targets. I mean, we have low property values and all that, and it's like, you know, there's a target right there and they get the benefit of the Boston marketplace. And that's, that's sad for us. That, that makes it difficult for us to deal with. And, uh, shouldn't be. We should probably be in the New Bedford area and that would help a little bit because, you know, it would make it harder to make the numbers work. And if, you know, uh, but yet would still build some affordable housing. You know, as you went along, but, uh, you know, to put, put someone under the gun, in my opinion, is not a good thing. Uh, you know, as you know, when they,
I agree with you, Patrick. Uh, you know, we're on the south coast. We're not in Boston metro and that's, that's where we fit. So. You're right.
Pretty sad. Pretty sad.
And you, you've nailed it.
Got two years to go before we can change it, guys, so everybody knows. It's been processed, but it'll be two years.
Yeah, it's sad.
Crazy.
Yeah. Unbelievable. Very. Well, go ahead. That's it. Other than that, I'm, I'm good. My meeting for, uh, the police buildings study committee is, uh, been put off because we're still waiting for stuff to come back from Derek on the, um, on the request for proposal, so.
I can fill in on that.
Oh, wait a minute, uh, Rich has some information about that.
And then I wanna ask a question. Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, uh, thank members of the board. Uh, uh, Madam Moderator sent me over the final, final, final version of the RFP, just to take a, a real quick, yeah, like, take, she said, take one last, very last look at it. Uh, she sent me that, I think last night. Uh, and I've looked at it and I think it's good to go. So the next step, uh, will be for Derek to get it into the state, get it listed in the goods and services bulletin and see what comes in.
So we, we probably, uh, really don't have much to do until we see where, how that goes, you know what I mean? And then, and then we'll have some conversation in case there's some tweaking or whatever that ultimately has to be done, well, then we'll have that. So we're probably off for a little bit.
Well, yeah, and you know, the, there's usually a, a thirty day runtime and then there's a couple of week lead time for this particular uh, procurement journal. So my guess is you probably really won't be talking about too much. I mean, I hate to say it, but it's just the way the state thing works for probably about six weeks.
Is what it is, you know? You gotta keep moving, keep moving, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
I had a question or a comment? For you, Mr. Tropiano? That's okay?
Sure.
Um, the, what used to be known as Forest View Nursing Home is going to be shut, shuttered and all of that other stuff is, we've been reading in the press. And I had talked with Madam Moderator about this before. Um, to me, that site, you take the building down and that's a perfect site in terms of location for this stuff. I, I'm sure that you have, you know, your eyes peeled someplace else. But it has direct access onto Minnetonka Avenue. Um, it's, you know, close to the geographic center of the town, which apparently is the corner of Depot, Minnetonka and Great Neck. Um, it just seems to me to be a site that, that would be very interesting.
I'll bring it up. I mean, you know, we, I think we've kind of got it down to two sites right now, but that doesn't mean we can't look at another one. I mean, what they looked at, you know, we probably looked at, I don't know, you know, thirty sites at one point. So, you know, I don't see why, why it wouldn't be a possibility to look at it.
Well, the beauty of it is it's, where you, you might not be able to use the building, but you wouldn't be cutting down trees, you wouldn't be clearing for, you know, you'd be using a used site, reusing a used site.
Yeah, the, the, you know, one of the things that we, we have to think about is what's the cost of getting the site ready? Uh, tearing a building down is kind of costs a lot of money. There's, um, there's, uh, then we have to purchase the land that, that costs a bit of money. So, you know, that we can add that into it, but I, I don't have a problem with bringing it forward and telling them, yeah, here's another site possibility and we'll look at it.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, sure.
Thanks. Uh, Jim, any liaison, liaising done?
Yeah, I'll do. I'll, I'll get through it pretty quick. Um, let's see, the, we need a, any new, uh, we still need a member for the Cabo Wareham Municipal, you know, Regional Refuge District. And, uh, it's basically administrative now. We need to rewrite the agreement to reflect to the, it's two towns. And, um, also you, you're gonna be fiscally monitoring the expenditures related to post-retirement benefits, because we already paid off the, um, um, liability for the retirement, but we do have the post-retirement benefit of healthcare that we spend through here. And, um, a few other things. So, um, anybody who might be interested in that type of thing and good technically on writing and, and looking at, um, agreements and stuff, it would be great. Um, you know, please step up. Um, we meet once a month, basically. Couple hours and, um, you know, we have an executive director who handles most of the day-to-day stuff and, um, we're doing a new agreement with him too. Um, so that's it on that. Uh, had a, um, housing authority, Wareham Housing Trust meeting today, speaking of housing. And, um, Erica Beany came and, uh, from Serpide and spoke to us about a new program they're doing for, um, subsidized housing inventories. Uh, they're trying to roll out a little division within Serpide. So, um, he's looking for towns to find out if they're interested. Uh, right now, um, you know, Ken is buried with everything else he has. And, um, so this might be a good fit for us. And, uh, you know, gave us a breakdown and they ran a pilot program in the town of Mansfield. Um, so, so that happened today. Um, we also voted to, uh, um, recommend, uh, the appointment of, of Kyle Schultz to the, to the board and we'll, I'll ask you to put that on the agenda for next week. I'll send it to you. And, um, that'd be it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Judy?
I have nothing else. Thanks.
Yeah, I don't have any liaising either. Uh, I guess we've got a couple of sets of minutes.
Yes, we do, and everyone was present for both of them. So I moved that we approve the minute, meeting minutes of March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one and April sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Uh, hold on one second. The agenda is specifying March twenty-third and March thirtieth.
I have the agenda in front of me and it says March thirtieth and April sixth. Which agenda are you looking at?
That's not what was sent out, uh, on Thursday by the office.
It's what is posted. I have the posting.
I see what I.
Yeah, let's hold off on this because I don't wanna have any confusion over the minutes. This was, I'm looking at our packet because I pulled that up on my phone because I couldn't get the, the first two pages of the agenda to print. I will look at the minutes themselves to see what they say, however. Uh, we have three thirty.
Correct.
And we have three twenty-three. That's what's showing up in our packet.
All right. Then I'll, I'll, um, withdraw my motion.
Yeah, we'll come back. We'll get, we'll, we'll get them done next week.
Okay, sorry about that.
So can I, um, uh, uh, if, if these aren't written in stone yet, I don't know if I can, you might wanna look at the vote tallies. Um, the, the numbers are good, but, uh, they left my name off of voting yes or no. It's understood. It's just, and it's on a number of, um, different votes that were taken.
I corrected those, I believe, Mr. Muni's, but I'll double check.
All right, I, it's, it's not corrected on what I had, so if you did, great. And so when they send them out, I'd see it, but thank you very much.
Yeah, I did. I'll double check it. Um, I was pretty sure, cause I caught a couple and I thought, no, these don't add up.
Yeah, there was, there was a bunch, so.
Yeah.
If you want.
I'll double check it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, that leaves one thing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Alan, seconded by Judy. I thought he was asleep, but I guess not. Uh, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes, please.
Uh, myself, yes, five zero zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, Wareham. Be safe. And we'll see you next week.